The organization will be able to have any comments.
Oh, I'll be in there. Where's audience comment?
Here. He's coming back.
Hi, that was my paper.
I thought you got me one.
No. Here, I will be in the stair.
Oh.
I'm still here.
So you got seven o'clock. Yeah, you're in your generation age. You're right, you're right. You can still wear one. No ring? Come on, head get back where we're at. Not your finger out there.
Yeah.
That's my thing. I said that?
And he needs to do it all again. He digs more talk than anything. He likes his talk. Which is, uh, probably.
Oh, that's Chris's. Is that the police response?
Yeah. Cause he loves, uh, me, he loves doing things.
The police in the following.
That way, you know, he's down and always just thinking, yeah, I'm gonna be there. He can't even cry. He can't even make a sandwich.
Let's all rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll ask Mr. Carter to pray for the town members' church.
Say the following, Lord, thank you for this day and thank you for the strength of your guidance, Lord, help, or as we go through this weather, help them that's out in the weather and let the first responders and everyone that's involved, God, to travel. And God, just help these leaders tonight, leaders of our town, when we go forward, just bless them, Lord, to make the right decisions. And God, just help us all, we're in our midst, we're in our presence tonight, Lord. Thank you so much for being our Savior, such great salvation that you provided for each one of us. We love you, praise you and honor you in Jesus's precious name. Amen.
Amen. You may be seated. Will the clerk please, if you hold on?
Callthorn.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Melons.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
Thank you. Will someone move to adopt the Baker Law Firm's rules and the rules that the police chief gave, uh, the law enforcement reference guide he gave us out last month? Someone please move to adopt those?
Some move.
For discussion? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, can we have a vote?
That's expensive.
Oh, discussion?
And I would like to just say, I circulated a copy of the rules and procedure with a white paper book on them. Those are a little different than the ones that were in the agenda packets. I changed two sections. The first change was on four point three dot three under contracts, just to add that the council has the discretion to appoint people to authorize certain contracts under the purposes you can think of language there. And four point three, the remote participation policy, just to add the mayor. If for some reason the mayor needed to participate remotely, he could be able to do stuff. So feel free to discuss those, just wanted to note that those changes were.
You said four dot three and what was the other?
Four dot three dot three and then four point three. Were the odds of that?
No, it's, uh, it's well done. I don't think we're the only town that uses this. And I think the, uh, council chamber decorum and Chief Wilcox gave us was good. We're not the only town that uses that, so I think it's a good idea.
Any other discussion?
The only thing I would add is, under the agenda, I know that this process has been very frustrating for our clerk, and I think it should be recognized, the agenda is done by the clerk in collaboration with the mayor. The mayor doesn't approve or revise her agenda, they provide notes.
According to Robert's Rules, the chair of the meeting is the one who sets the agenda, and the clerk is willing, is welcome to give the mayor anything she would like on the agenda, and I don't think the mayor will ask anything not to be put on the agenda. But according to Robert's Rules, the mayor's the one who approves and writes the agenda.
I, I do understand Robert's Rules of Order, and I also understand the process and how it's turned by the clerk and local government. Robert's Rules of Order is written to handle meetings as a whole, not necessarily just lock into local government.
I mean, we may have to decide this by vote, but the idea is, anything the clerk wants on the agenda is to be placed on the agenda. Anything the mayor wants placed on the agenda is to be placed on the agenda, so there shouldn't be any controversy.
Well, again, he doesn't have the authority to revise and approve, and that was how it was listed.
Only the council approves.
And I'm sorry, I was still speaking. That, that is correct, the council approves. She does have a way of keeping it in her system, and when you change the name of the document, that does affect how it appears on her documents, one. And, and two, he's giving the indication that she's doing something with his agenda. It's not his agenda, it is the council's agenda.
According to our charter, the president of the meeting is the mayor. And so the president comes with the agenda, and if the clerk wants to put something on the agenda, I don't think he's going to turn it down, and I don't see what the big problem is.
I have already checked with the other clerks throughout the area, and all have indicated that the clerk makes the agenda in collaboration with the mayor or town manager, not, they make the agenda in collaboration with her.
You're really just picking a little mad.
I, I'm not. When I see a clerk that's so frustrated with the process, you know, I feel like she was demeaning and talked down to, and, and I did have that discussion with John early on, that it was kind of demeaning the way he had, I guess, sent out one of his emails, and I certainly don't want our employees to be upset and feel like they're being demeaned.
Of course, the employees work for the council.
We can agree to disagree on it, and certainly if I have to make the motion that going forward, that the process be that the clerk, nobody was left out of the process, and, and I feel like it was kind of a power play, not gonna lie.
I'd like to say something, I did not mean to demean anybody, that is not the intention of my email. I did not mean to demean anybody, I would hate to feel that that is what has become a process, just for clarification. Any more discussion? Do we have a motion to bring it to a vote?
We already had that.
Okay, you had a motion to bring it to a vote, the.
I moved, who seconded it?
Yes.
You're talking about the procedure, he's asking if I have a motion with regard to the agenda.
Would we have, like to have an amendment to the motion?
I would be happy to amend it, so that that section reads, the clerk.
Which section?
Please. Start.
It'll be five.
Five.
What section is it?
Five two.
Okay, under the Town of Hound Town Council Rules and Procedures, five dot two, agenda, the clerk, in collaboration, with the mayor does the agenda. We all have the opportunity to provide notes of what we would like to change, and it does not mess with her document keeping.
So you'd like to strike out the word along, put in collaboration?
Mm-hmm.
So in other words, they both have to agree on the final agenda?
No.
Yes. In collaboration means both have to agree.
No, that means that they've, they've had the opportunity to discuss it, he can provide notes, but I'm, I'm not of the notion that I feel like the employees need to be browbeaten over wording. And I figure if we, if we browbeat each other right here, right now, over the wording, then there won't be any need to browbeat the employees.
Well, collaboration means both of them will come to agreement as to the, uh, agenda.
I don't think anybody is left out of the agenda process. The email she sent out asked, does anybody want, what do you, what do you want on the agenda?
Well, she did leave off disincorporation on the agenda she sent to the mayor.
Um, the first?
The one she sent to the mayor, he says you asked to be taken off.
And did he, did he come back?
He corrected it. He corrected and sent it back to the clerk.
He shouldn't correct the agenda, he should just make a note, this was left off.
Oh, no, he asked you to correct it because, uh, they weren't in collaboration. I mean, what I'm saying is, she can't just leave stuff off or add things on to without the mayor's knowledge.
I think she left off anything arbitrarily, it was an error. And that error can be corrected easily by saying, hey, I didn't see this on the agenda, and then letting her do the correction from her end, again, so that it doesn't mess up the record keeping system that she has in how she stores documents.
I disagree with your conclusion, I think as the president of the meeting, what few powers the mayor has, one is to set the agenda.
I disagree. And hence my motion that the clerk is setting the agenda, if you all want to give her notes, then give her notes.
Well, you said in collaboration with, I didn't say she said.
Absolutely, in, in collaboration. You know, I, I think this can be an easy process, we have never had a problem in the past, any amendment agenda set. And this one, I, I understand why she was frustrated, I understand why she was ready to stick her home in her eye, but back and forth is not necessary at all.
It's a stressful position.
So, my motion is in collaboration, and he can send her notes, so that she can make the correction on this end and send it back to her, or send it back to him so that he can really deal with these other chooses.
Can the clerk, um, read the motion to the amendment to the?
Is there a second?
Is there a second? Is there a second? Yours seconds the motion, is there, can the clerk read back the motion to amend the motion?
I'm sorry?
Can you read back the motion to amend the motion that has been submitted by Councilman Kennedy?
Woman.
Councilwoman Kennedy?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the whole thing?
Can you read the motion that Councilman Kennedy has, uh, to amend the former motion, original motion?
He's wanting you to read the motion back, Courtney, did you get the motion in your notes?
I was taking them, I was wondering if, I'm sorry, I was looking at where we, um, I was looking back on the other one, if you all had, uh, agreed to the, what the chief had said last week, I thought I had missed that.
She just, uh, her motion was to strike along with.
She wanted in collaboration on it, I think. Yeah, that's all she wanted.
That's the amendment to the, uh, it's after the amendment, then we vote on the rules.
Yeah, she just wanted to change the word to in collaboration.
Can we have a roll call vote of?
Callthorn.
The amendment.
No.
Uh, Hall?
No.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Melons?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Is there any more discussion on the original motion to adopt the rules and the, the rules from the law office and the rules submitted by the police chief?
Even with in collaboration, still good rules.
No, I just, I just don't want them to be frustrated, you know, whether we agree on things or agree to disagree, they really shouldn't be frustrated through the process.
Well, at the end of the day, I hope that clerk will put all items on the agenda that are requested.
Yeah, I, I don't think she's missing anything arbitrarily, you know.
There wasn't one thing that was left off, but.
We are all human.
We are, we are, we are.
Would there be any other words you would want to submit to make it more clear, what you want?
No, no, I'm good, I just think everybody needs to work together.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote for the motion to adopt the rules?
Callthorn.
Yes.
Hall.
Yeah.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Melons.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
Could you all speak up a little louder?
We'll try.
Yeah, you have to.
Madam Clerk, if I may, would you also reflect in that vote that that was for the updated rules?
Updated.
Cause we had two sets.
Okay.
That was for the updated.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is when you set the monthly meeting times. Will somebody move to keep the meeting time at six thirty every third Tuesday of the month?
I would make that motion.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Can we have a roll call vote for, any discussion?
Okay, we were talking about, set, set the monthly meeting time?
Keep it the same, six thirty and.
Yes, that's fine, but I need to make an alternate plan, amendment to that if we can.
Do you like the amendment?
Yes. Okay, I make a motion that we amend it to the point of the weather situations and people getting here in contact. Um, I think we need to, for instance, my hill is very bad, and I have, I don't think I've ever missed a meeting. It's in the, it's a, either walk up and down my hill, and nobody wants to do anything to help with the hill. And I think we need to, in the meantime, if it's wet or falling, wetting my neck, then I think, not necessarily me, but anybody that has to do this, and walk up and down some road weather, I think we need to do alternate planning for meetings, that's my suggestion.
Would we like to, uh, say that if we are under a winter storm, uh, advisory watch or warning, then, uh, we'll put it off for a week automatically? And, uh, if we're under a national emergency or anything else, we'll put it off a week automatically? Does that sound like we're doing?
That sounds like pretty good, are you offering that amendment?
I make that amendment.
Okay.
Do we have a second to the amendment?
I'll second the amendment.
On the original, uh, let's vote on the original motion, can we have a roll call vote on the, I mean, on the amendment? Do we have a roll call vote on the amendment to the original motion?
Yes, Callthorn.
Yes.
Hall.
Yeah.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Melons.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
Okay, now can we vote on the original motion, is there any more discussion?
Nothing, in this case, if the amended motion passes, you don't vote on the original?
You do, you have to amend the motion, then you vote on the motion.
The amended motion.
Is there any more discussion?
Not the original, I mean.
On the original, is there any more discussion on the original?
The original motion was, it was the third Tuesday.
Yes, and now that we've amended it to make it automatically postponed, do we want, we want to vote on that? Is there any more discussion on the original motion that has been amended?
No, no.
Can we have a roll call vote for the original motion? That has been amended?
Callthorn.
Yes.
Hall.
Yeah.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Melons.
Yes.
Powers.
Yeah.
Next item on the agenda, appointments. Start with Vice Mayor, is there a motion for Vice Mayor?
I move London Powers for nominee for Vice Mayor.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion?
Is that something you're willing to do? Is it something you want to do?
Don't think I'm ready for that. This is, this is the first meeting I've ever.
Really, what a Vice Mayor does is just oversees the meeting in case there's an absence, that's all a Vice Mayor does. And I think of all the people up here, other Vice Mayors, we're Jonathan Walters, um, Jay Graham, we always try to put the person who is neutral on the council in as Vice Mayor, and you seem to be the most neutral person on council.
I want to make a substitute motion on that. Substitute.
You want to amend the name?
I want to make a substitute, yeah.
Okay.
And I want to nominate Labor Kennedy as Vice Mayor.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
So I, I think that, uh, as we've seen so far in the meeting, there are two people that are kind of on the edges, uh, Ms. Kennedy and myself, and I think it's better for the operating of a meeting, have someone who is more in the middle of the body. And we have typically had that on our council, and, uh, so I will be voting against the substitute motion. Or subs, the, the substitute motion.
Any more discussion on substitute motion? Roll count, roll call vote on substitute motion, please.
Callthorn.
No.
Hall.
No.
Kennedy.
Come back to me.
Melons.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
Then I'm a yes.
Is there a part of the territory that we still need to vote on the motion as a whole? Is that substitute?
It's a substitute installed by us from here, so I think we're the prior motion.
Next one then is manager, is there a motion?
Make the motion to reappoint Brittany Carter as the town manager.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I do have a question for, uh, Ms. Carter, how many employees do we have in the town right now?
All employees for the town?
Yes.
Full and part-time?
Yes.
Do you want to count the interns?
Is the intern getting paid?
Yes.
Yes.
Seven.
Seven.
Well, and I guess my, myself is eight.
As I think of a, a manager, and I've discussed this with you, I think of the person who kind of oversees things at Town Hall, not everybody's boss, but the person who knows what's going on in all the departments, and who we as council members can contact if, uh, we ever see something going on, we get a complaint, a citizen or something like that, and I would hope that if you continue as manager, that you would be willing to be that liaison between the council and the employees. How many hours do you work currently?
Um, it's between, um, twenty and twenty-four.
Are you hourly or salary?
It is a salary.
Salary.
Brittany has been known to be here more than that, though. You know, it's, it depends on what's going on. I, I would offer up the explanation because Brittany and I did the grant training, sometimes we're sitting in there working on grants. Yeah. Together. So, yeah, I think twenty-four is a very conservative number, there may be some weeks she's here twenty-four, but for the most part, she's here more than that. And we have to train them and stuff like that, there's a lot of stuff going on. Well. Please? Yeah, I'll get to. Okay. I'll get to that later, please. Not, not the section to go into that.
Is there any more discussion for the appointment of manager? We had a motion and a second, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Callthorn.
Yes.
Hall.
No.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Melons.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
The next position is clerk slash treasurer, is there a motion?
First thing I would say is those need to be separated, at this point, we don't have anybody that, um, is trained to do both, unless y'all have somebody in, in mind that can do both, I would suggest separating that.
Can we have a motion and then we can have discussion about separating or is that a first?
Sure, I would make the motion to separate the clerk position from the treasurer position.
Do you have a nominee for, for a clerk you'd like to put forward?
Yes. I would make the motion that we reappoint Courtney at this time, Courtney is a part-time interim clerk, you know, obviously, we need, we need people that can be here forever and ever amen, that can go through proper training, um, you know, at this point, it's kind of piecemeal, and I would really like to send them down the road to get some training with one of the other clerks, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, do we have a second to motion?
I'll second. How many, uh, how many hours do you work at Town Hall?
It just depends, usually I'm, I'm at school of the day, and then I come in a few hours of the evening, and like, we've been on this break, so I've been getting like five or so hours a day, or sometimes more, since we've been off.
So you're an hourly employee?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've, uh, I haven't heard anything negative about you in the community.
Appreciate it.
I just, uh, I think, uh, I don't think there's any reason why you would leave anything off the agenda.
No.
That's, uh, as long as we have everything anybody wants, that's an anything.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna put it on that.
Next by, uh, Wednesday, five P.M., correct?
Yeah, in the business, yeah.
Okay, and then if, you'll share it with the mayor.
Yeah.
If the mayor wants to add anything, he can do that, and he'll send it to you by when?
I think it's Thursday.
Thursday, and you'll be in charge of posting and publishing?
Yeah.
Okay. As long as you're willing to work with him that way, you know, that's.
I think I had it posted by, I think Friday, I'm in out here.
Need more discussion on motion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Callthorn.
To be clear, I think we need to make sure that we're voting on the separation of the positions.
We are, yes, we are voting on appointing Courtney as clerk, well separated in two positions, and we have a motion and a second for that. Can we have a roll call, please?
Callthorn.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Melons.
I'm standing.
Yes.
Okay, now we're left with the treasurer position, do we have any motion for the treasurer?
How long have you been clerk? I was gonna ask that question.
Um, we'll see, since May.
Since May, so you've been clerk since May?
Yeah, I think it was May.
Do we have a motion for treasurer position?
The only thing I have to offer for the treasurer position at this point is, we have the intern, you know, the whole hope with the intern was to put somebody in here that we could train and develop as a clerk treasurer, um, she is in school, so obviously she, her, her hours do have to be part-time, but she is working towards an accounting degree, which is exactly where we need her to be. So I, at this point, in the interest of ensuring that we have positions filled, I would make the motion to, um, appoint Abigail Hamilton into the interim, as an interim part-time treasurer.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
The question is, for me, is she here?
Uh.
She left a little bit after.
She's never, and this kind of a, I don't, I don't know her, has she been working for the town? She hasn't been working in the interim position, um, for, how long she been, maybe three months, four, maybe?
Maybe, it's not been that long.
She's, she's learning, you know, the problem when we started trying to find somebody to do the clerk treasurer position is, we had a lot of resumes, but those who were qualified would not accept the pay we were willing to offer. And then when we spoke with the college about an intern that was possibly a third year, that we might get some hands-on experience, there were none available. So she is a first year with no experience, but she's picking it up nicely, and, yeah, I mean, I, I don't have any complaints about what she does.
Now, I mean, is she, so she's in college? How, I mean, is she, so she's in college right now?
She is in college.
Is that U V A class?
Yes, she is, yeah, she is, uh, I think her professor is Tina Fast. You know, it's one of those things where, just like everything else, we've had to beg, borrow, steal, ask for help, and people stepped up to help, so.
And you've been the interim treasurer for how long?
October, mid-October, maybe, that was done to get the tax tickets out. I, I don't, I didn't retire to come back to work, but we were in a position of nobody else knows the system. We have to get tax tickets out and we have to have a treasurer in place.
And so you would be stepping down as a town employee?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't want to be here, I, I don't want to be here working in that capacity.
So you would not receive a salary anymore for that?
No, that doesn't mean I want to walk away and want to help her, you know, Abby is young, and like I said, no hands-on. But I need to be able to walk away when I need to be able to walk away. And as she becomes more versed, then that creates that opportunity for me. And I, I didn't retire to come back to work. I want to do what I want to do.
I'd like to have had a resume, but, you know, which are already on council, so.
Well, I, I can tell you what resume is. She's a young twenty-year-old girl that's in college and worked at Robos. Ta-da!
And she's, she's very intelligent, she, she learns pretty quick, you know?
And she's, she's interested, very interested. Yeah, she, uh, she has impressed me and she's surprised me, so.
Do we have any more discussion? Do we have a motion, do we have a motion?
We do.
Okay, do we have a second to that motion?
Yeah.
I second.
Can we have a roll call vote?
Call for one.
I abstain due to lack of information.
Uh, Hall?
I'm the same way, I don't know the girl, never seen her.
Okay, Kennedy?
Yes.
Mullins?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Next appointment is Police Chief, is there a motion?
I'd make the motion to reappoint Chris Wilcox.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion?
I would like to amend the motion. I would like to amend the motion to appoint Chief Wilcox through March thirty-first, and then advertise for a position to see if someone more local would be interested in that position.
Is, is there a second in the motion, I mean, the amendment to the motion? Is there a second? Back to the original motion?
Where, I would like to ask, uh, Chief Wilcox, where do you reside now, not a street address?
I'm more than happy to discuss it, we're in a closed session, if that's appropriate, I'm not willing to answer that in a open session.
Okay, we are.
It's a personal matter in an open session, it's a personal matter.
So this is your appointed position, which I think.
I just, I make my statement clear.
So attorney, you have a, uh, I mean, I guess, I can ask the question, but he can leave a fifth, is that kind of nice?
He can only answer what he wants to answer, I think under, under FOIA, you know, under rules that protect personnel and identifying information, typically what you have is like social security numbers, things which could be used, I guess, to identify and potentially, you know, harm somebody through whether identity fraud or some sort of financial crime. You don't typically have these carve-out exceptions for the locality somebody lives in, for example. So, I mean, that's my legal opinion, but he's free to answer or not answer as of which.
I think, uh, one of the things, a little bit of history, and he can correct me if he sees it differently, but, uh, we decided as a council to, uh, get rid of our former police chief. And the former police chief said that we could not accept that we had someone to oversee the evidence room. And so, uh, we didn't have anybody, but at that time, uh, Mr. Wilcox had been town manic-, applied for town manager. He'd come to interview for that, but he let some of us know that if the police chief position ever came open, that, uh, he'd be willing to put his name in for that. And then he had a short stint as treasurer of the town, and that didn't work out.
Bookkeeper, I believe.
Bookkeeper, I'm sorry, bookkeeper. And, uh, anyway, long and short of it is, we never advertised for that position. We appointed Mr. Wilcox without ever seeing if any other local people would like to, or be interested in, or be qualified to take that position. And so it's kind of a, I would like to advertise for this position, but obviously, no one else on the council does, but we cannot get rid of Mr. Wilcox, because as long as we have the evidence room, uh, we have to have a licensed police officer to oversee it. And so, you don't want to advertise for a position. Make, make an amendment, we advertise for a position. We'll make that amendment.
Why don't we do that, we need a motion, we have.
Right, there's no motion to advertise for a position, so, um.
I make a motion.
You know, we are under a court order. So it's, it's not just a matter of as long as we have the evidence room, uh, we decided to keep someone, we are under a court order to keep someone.
Right, right, we have to have someone to oversee the evidence room, that's how I would do it. And so what I would like to do is we have to have a police chief. But my amendment in case, is to have him as police chief through March thirty-first, and if he's the only one who applies, then he would be the firmest police chief, we would appoint him, or if he's most qualified. But if someone else were to apply, who was either more qualified, or who was local, or who we liked better, then we could choose that person at our March meeting, that was my amendment. That's something you can second?
I second.
Okay.
Okay, any discussion on the amendment to the original motion?
And that's simply allowing more, you know, local people, my dream for the police chief has always been somebody who lives in the town or lives right outside the town. Someone who whenever he's in town or she's in town, is on call and nine-one-one in contact with him. And they can be right on the scene, slap on their badge, be at the scene very quickly. That's always been my ideal, and I think having someone that has to travel over an hour to get here to the town of town is not the ideal for a police chief for the town. That's why I made that amendment.
Is there any more discussion?
Yeah, and we have a police chief once or twice a month here in town, and we can't have that. And you all have more common sense than that. We need a cop every day, not just once or twice a month. What's wrong with you all?
Unfortunately, that's not something that we can afford, it is twenty-four-seven covered.
Well.
And that's what broke this town.
It is, you're right.
Yes, totally broke it.
Well, you gotta know what.
We've got, we've got a police chief that does his job.
Once or twice a month?
Once or twice. There are administrative agents that go along with that, and I think that's where people misunderstand.
Well, I've been misunderstood for a long time, now you all tell me, come on.
I know that he was at your house frequently, Mr. Hallman.
When?
I, I don't have dates.
That was two or three years ago.
No, it wasn't, but.
Well, I must not been there.
Either or.
I wasn't there?
Either or.
So the point is, we've never advertised for this position. And I don't think that, uh, and I don't think that we should have, if there's someone more local who is available, I think that person ought to have an opportunity to be police chief. But at the end of the day, I understand we have to have a police chief, and so if the amendment doesn't pass, then.
The only one, the only one showed up at my house was Robert Potter.
But that's, that's, you know, there were just.
Well, at least he showed up. Now come on, tell me.
And this is the feedback I'm getting from the.
Well, everybody talks about Robert. Okay, but I didn't see anything wrong with him, but every time something happened, he'd talk to the cupboard or whatever, and town won't, throw him under the bus or something like that.
That's not true, nobody threw Robert, Robert Potter under the bus. However, I, I'm not at liberty to provide information that he provided to me personally, so I'm not even gonna go there. I think we need to move along and vote on the motion that's made.
So what is the amendment?
Let's, let's vote on the amendment.
What was the amendment?
Well, like I said, he works in town, he did show up.
Your amendment was to, um, keep him through March, right?
March thirty-first, and then, uh.
Post it.
Advertise for a position, Hopefield Progress.
Can we have a roll call vote on the amendment, please?
Call for one.
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Kennedy?
No.
Mullins?
No.
Powers?
Yes.
Can we, uh, vote, is there any more discussion on the original motion?
Like I said, I haven't heard anything against Wilcox. But we need a cop, and we need one.
Yes, yes.
Let's, we need one.
Do we need, is that the amended motion we need to vote again?
I don't think so, the amended motion was to appoint Chief Wilcox through March thirty-first, I think, the council's voted that. He is the chief through March thirty-first, and he'll be advertising for the chief police chief.
And then if he's the only one who applies, or he's the best one of the lot, we'll keep him.
But they've got to be improved.
Do you have a name?
They've got to be improved.
Next, uh, next issue on the agenda is, um, item on the agenda, sorry, is the attorney position. Do I have a motion for that position?
I'd make the motion to appoint Greg Baker and Associates, AKA Kevin Dotson.
I second. I third.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Call for one.
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Mullins?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting of the town, town council? Is there a motion?
It's moved.
Second?
I'd like to amend the, that motion, I would like to make the motion to amend it in recess for five minutes.
Okay.
It's a fully amended, I accept your amendment.
Is there a second? Yeah, just second that.
I second.
All in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
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 All opposed, say nay? And motion is moved, any? We adjourn.
End of recess for town.
End of recess for five minutes.
Okay, thanks, okay.
That's good.
I'll hit.